You had to do it, huh?
Mm-hmm. Which it doesn't take.
It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good eve- good evening, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as is?
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, item A, approve eight nineteen nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item B, approve two AM liquor license for El Laurel Restaurant. Item C, gambling license premise permit for Granite City Lumberjacks. And item D, appoint maintenance worker positions and approve eligibility less list expiration from March thirty first, twenty twenty.
Move to approve A, B, and C and pull D.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, Mike or Vic, you gonna take that D?
Yes, um, I would like to move to make job offers to Josh Schultz and Darcy Stoltz. Condition on successful completion of employment testing salary to be step one at six months, step two at twelve months. Um, step at twelve months and step three at twelve months, so it's step one at six months, step two twelve months, step three.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
In that, does that include the eligibility list expiring March thirty first, it's in the writing, but I want to just clarify that?
And to have the eligibility list exist until, or at least expire March third, third March thirty first of two thousand twenty.
Second.
I didn't get a vote on the first one, is that an amendment to it?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, item A, regular agenda, twenty eighteen audit fund transfers and audit review.
Can you transfer this to the screen?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
No, thanks for.
Hard to find good help, you should know that.
Yeah, yeah, I hear ya, we're on the same boat.
I don't do this enough, so I apologize if I'm wrong.
Ah, there we go. All right, well, good evening, my name is Justin McGrath. I'm an auditor with Conway, Dothan, Schmiesing, the the city's auditor, and I'm here tonight to deliver the audit report for December thirty first, two thousand eighteen, the year then ending. You got a few documents in front of you, um, the the document that I'll cover is the presentation I'm gonna cover tonight. It has more of a summary format of all the other audit reports that we we deliver. Uh, so if you're looking for more detail than what's in that presentation, uh, feel free, you have a thicker bound document, that's the actual audit report, and then the management letter is that thinner bound document. So that's a lot of supporting detail that we use for our presentation is derived from those documents. So I'll jump right in, uh, the independent audit report, uh, page one and two of the presentation. Uh, so on here, it kind of describes the the auditing standards we use to determine if the city's financial statements are free of material statement and can be relied upon to gauge performance and and be used for decision-making purposes. Uh, the big takeaway on page two is that very opinion is that in our opinion, going through the city's financial statements, uh, they can be relied upon, they're presented fairly in our opinion. Um, so it's good, uh, sort of a clean audit report, as they say. Uh, also, uh, in the in that report, there's an opportunity for your your administration to maybe discuss more of a narrative format. Uh, some of the changes and the big events that happened during the year, that's also in our audit report. And then the internal control letter, which is kind of our opinion on how financial information flows through the city and and some of the the findings that we had there. So I'll cover that later on, uh, it's just a brief overview of our auditor's report. Uh, moving into the numbers, ah, so, uh, here's your statement of net position, so this is the overall balance sheet of the city as a point in time being twelve thirty one, two thousand eighteen. And then we butted up against twelve thirty one, two thousand seventeen to see, uh, some of the changes that happened, uh, in the course of a year. Uh, you see here current assets, that's at the very top, uh, these be items like cash, accounts receivable, prepaid insurance, those types of things. You see there was an increase in twenty eighteen compared to twenty seventeen, uh, a big chunk of that is due to an increase in cash, so. Uh, the two thousand eighteen A bond issuance, if you remember back in December of two thousand eighteen, uh, that that cash came through for the amphitheater project. Uh, so at year end, your cash really jumped up quite a bit. Uh, non-current assets, these be items like, uh, buildings, infrastructure, um, machinery and equipment. Uh, there was an increase, uh, in those also in twenty eighteen, uh, the big chunk there is due to some construction in progress additions. Uh, the amphitheater being being the largest, uh, but as well as like the River Park project, and there's some, uh, River Edge Park, excuse me, and machinery and equipment additions. So, uh, those kind of physical assets that the city has, uh, you gained a few more in two thousand eighteen. Uh, moving to liability side of of the city's balance sheet here, uh, current liabilities, so those be accounts payable, salaries, wages payable, those types of items. Uh, you saw a decrease in twenty seventeen compared to twenty eighteen, uh, the big reason for that decrease is if you remember in twenty seventeen, uh, the public works facility was under construction. Uh, there were some outstanding bills that hadn't been paid as of the end of two thousand seventeen, they got cleared up in twenty eighteen. Uh, we were not seeing that amount of bills related to construction, uh, at the end of twenty eighteen. And then long-term liabilities, so these are, obviously, net pension liability, other post-employment benefits liabilities, uh, and then then debt. So, uh, capital leases, uh, bond issuances, those types of items. Uh, you see here, uh, overall, those long-term liabilities increased, you know, you added that little over five million dollar bond issuance at the end of two thousand eighteen. So you know why you as you continued to make scheduled debt payments, uh, you did add five million dollars in debt in twenty eighteen, uh, so that, uh, did increase your overall long-term liability balance. And then at the very bottom there, the net position, so, uh, this would be if you you sold all the city's assets, converted to cash, and if you paid off all the bills and all the outstanding debt that the city had, this is kind of what would be left over. Now, some of that is in a liquid form, like capital assets, so we have your net investment capital assets, obviously, as you continue to, uh, build projects and acquire equipment and and buildings and those things. Uh, that that amount is gonna increase, um, so, you know, you look overall, that net position kind of continue that trend that we've been seeing for the last several years of of steadily increasing. Uh, there's not wild swings, it's something you guys, uh, have planned for, and you're seeing that come through on your on your statement of net position here. So this is the city as a whole, so all aspects of the city's operations, it's kind of summed up in one neat little picture here. Um, now we'll look at the individual funds that make up the city, uh, starting with the city's general fund. So the general fund of the city, this main operating fund, on our first slide here, we have a look at the, uh, general fund cash and investment balances. So you see, this is your your cash balance from twenty seventeen into twenty eighteen did decrease. A lot of that was due mainly just to the effects of the operations of the general fund. Um, there was, uh, looking at your budget, uh, four hundred thousand dollar planned spend down of that general fund balance, uh, and we're seeing that coming through, um, in the actual results, uh, when you look at your, uh, cash and investment balances. Uh, here's a a five-year trend of the overall revenues, expenditures, um, and the overall fund balance of that general fund. Uh, you'll see here in twenty eighteen, uh, the revenues, or excuse me, expenditures overtook the revenues, uh, that was the case in twenty seventeen, a little bit larger, uh, gap in twenty eighteen. Uh, but again, that was planned, it's part of your budget process, uh, and you you kind of were able to forecast that, um, to spend down some of that fund balance. And if you look at the overall fund balance, a good metric we like to use is, uh, the the month's worth of expenditures in your fund balance. So we recommend a a six-month, maybe a buffer in there, and in fund balances, uh, maybe some of those liabilities, or excuse me, those assets can be converted to cash and you can pay off your immediate, uh, bills and and obligations. Um, right now, you're sitting at about seven and a half months, so you're above that, maybe that six-month minimum, six-month minimum that we recommend. Uh, so that that's a, it's a good buffer to have in case there's any issues with remittances from, you know, the county for the sales tax or property tax, or even the state for, uh, LGA and those types of items. So it does provide a little bit of a, uh, some breathing room there. Uh, on page six here, we have a breakdown of the revenues by type, so property taxes, license permit, LGA, charge of services, those types of items. You can see, looking at, uh, the tax revenue, the top line there, uh, that one had the biggest increase in twenty seventeen compared to twenty, or excuse me, twenty eighteen compared to twenty seventeen. Um, and a lot of that, we're looking at, you know, it's not necessarily the tax rates went up, but tax capacity went up, so, uh, there's two parts of that equation, um, they both have a an effect on the revenue of the city. Uh, tax capacity, uh, of the city and those valuations, uh, really shot the tax revenues up in twenty eighteen. Uh, looking at the expenditures of the general fund, uh, so public safety, this is by department, so public safety, public works have historically been the two largest departments within the city, and that is no change in twenty eighteen. However, there were some increases in both public safety and public works, uh, I believe in in the public works department, there was a a retirement payout that happened there. Um, there's also some increase in salary benefits, personnel types of costs, uh, in the public works department, or excuse me, public safety department, uh, there were some increase in personnel costs as well. Uh, as well as, uh, some property and equipment, those types of items. Uh, moving away from the the general fund into the special revenue funds of the city, uh, so these are, uh, funds that are supposed to serve a specific purpose and hopefully be self-sustaining. Uh, the local sales tax, that's one of the bigger funds of the city, uh, you can see there, they had a negative change in fund balance, so you take the revenues, less the expenditures and transfers in and out. Uh, you see that the fund balance of the local sales tax fund did decrease. Um, a big, big reason for that decrease is transfers out of that fund, so that that revenue comes in and it's meant for other specific purposes, and that revenue is transferred out, or those funds are transferred out to other parts of the city. Uh, I think the Rivers Edge Park was a big beneficiary, that that capital project fund, uh, to help pay for some of those improvements, as well as servicing the debt on the two thousand ten A and the two thousand eighteen A, uh, bond issuances. Um, and then looking at, uh, the the TIF districts, TIF district number two, uh, that had a large decrease as well in twenty eighteen, um, compared to maybe some of the prior years that we've seen. Uh, and that's that's, uh, the the funds in that, uh, fund are, uh, service the two thousand fourteen A debt, and that's pretty much what they're used for, there's not a lot of revenue in those funds, it's pretty much there to pay down that debt as it comes due. And then large increase, uh, maybe it's a little modest compared to the decreases in the other funds, but the TIF district two dash one, you know, as that as that TIF district starts, uh, realizing some of that, you know, property increased valuation, um, then you're gonna see the revenue follow along with that, and that's what we're seeing here. Uh, moving on to the the capital project funds, so the capital project funds, they're, uh, those special types of funds where you want to capture all the costs and revenues related to a specific project. Uh, and, um, I really enjoyed this slide because it kind of gives you the full lifecycle of a of a capital project within the city. You have some that are just beginning, some that are in full swing, and some that are, uh, getting ready to be wrapped up. Uh, so one of the big ones that began in in twenty eighteen was the amphitheater project. Um, now that's primarily funded through the bond issuance, so funds are transferred from the debt service fund into this fund to pay for, uh, the construction costs. Uh, so there was a decrease as some of those funds transferred across, didn't meet the obligations necessarily at year end to pay, um, for those construction costs. I believe there's funds been transferred into that fund subsequently to make those payments, and and now that fund balance is back, uh, in the black. Uh, the Rivers Edge Fund, that's a another large, uh, larger project that happened during the year. Uh, I believe the funding for that came primarily from that local sales tax fund, uh, so it's kind of paying for some of those park improvements. And then, uh, as the project continues and continues to accumulate expenses, uh, more funds will be transferred across, uh, to pay that as well, to get that fund balance out of a deficit. Moving on to the the business-type activities of the city, uh, so you got the water fund and the sewer fund. Uh, this is kind of my feel-good story for the night, these two funds, um, as you can see, the water fund cash balance started, you know, for the last five years, in fourteen, uh, through two thousand eighteen, you've been able to adjust the rates and set those rates accordingly, so that, uh, you can build a little bit of a a buffer in that fund. Um, if you ever come across a large maintenance repair expense, uh, you know, in two thousand fourteen, if it was over two hundred thousand dollars, you you might not have been able to pay for it with, uh, the water fund's, uh, cash. Uh, but now, through the, being able to set those rates accordingly to build up that buffer, uh, if you were to experience some maybe unexpected repair maintenance item, uh, you have the funds there to cover that. And I believe in two thousand nineteen, there's a plan to maybe do some, uh, water work or water tower repair and work, where you will use up some of those funds, and you have that on hand, which is, which is nice, you don't have to go and bond or borrow from other funds. And then looking at the the revenues of the fund, the water fund, and then the operating expenses of the water fund, and the overall net income amount, you can see you got a, um, a sustainable model there, where you're bringing in enough, uh, in revenues to cover the expenses and depreciation of the fund, as as well as, um, paying down those, the debt obligations that the water fund still has. So you mean, you can almost move fourteen through eighteen around, and you might not be able to tell which one is which, because it's been, uh, so, been performing so well over the last few years. And then on page eleven here, or thirteen, excuse me, uh, this is a a look at the water fund's net income amount, uh, we moved depreciation, that's a, it's a non-cash expense, the wear and tear of the infrastructure and the equipment and and buildings of the water fund, and we butted that up against the, uh, debt service requirements of that fund. So you see, uh, the the fund is cash flowing well enough to make all scheduled debt payments and, uh, barring any changes in the operations in the future, I would expect that trend to continue. Now the sewer fund, uh, sewer fund kind of has the same story as the water fund, uh, you know, that that cash balance has continued to grow, um, over the past several years, which is, it's good to have that, again, that that safety net or that buffer. If there was some catastrophic failure of sewer infrastructure or equipment, you have the funds on hand to make those those repairs and that maintenance, or even potential capital replacement in the in the future. Uh, looking at the operating revenues and the non-operating expenses, or operating revenues and expenses of the sewer fund, uh, you can see, uh, there's still a bit of a deficit or net income, or net loss, excuse me, uh, in twenty eighteen. It has shrunk compared to twenty seventeen, uh, so the rates are are at that, at that point where they're maybe not covering the depreciation, uh, you know, again, that non-cash expense of the sewer fund's infrastructure, equipment, those types of items. Uh, but it's still cash flowing very well, it's just maybe not building up, uh, reserve, uh, adequately to pay for, uh, you know, wholesale capital replacement, infrastructure replacement in the future, but it's getting closer. And obviously, in the sewer fund contracted services, uh, for the waste disposal is the largest expense, and that's largely out of your control, I understand. Uh, so you kind of have to pass those, uh, increases that the city of Saint Cloud has onto the rest of the, uh, the users. Um, so that's tough, it's a tough one to control, um, for the for the city council here. Uh, in addition to looking at the numbers of the city, we also look at the city's compliance with Minnesota state statutes, so we call it legal compliance. Um, we look at items such as, uh, co- conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding requirements, uh, public purpose, those types of items. Uh, so we're happy to note through all our testing, we did, we noted no issues of of non-compliance, so that's, uh, kudos to your staff for not only knowing what the laws are, but making sure that they're being enforced and policies are implemented. And I touched on internal controls, so how, uh, financial information flows through the city, uh, we noted no material weaknesses in the processes that the city uses to record financial transactions, report financial data, um, so again, having those proper processes, checks and balances in place, uh, we saw that paying off as we went through the audit. Uh, and then in the thinner bound document that you have in front of you, uh, we we make communications from us as auditors to you as the city council, to kind of let you know how the audit process went. So, uh, the accounting practices we use, any difficulties we encountered, I know, um, with the software implementation, uh, this year, there was some, uh, growing pains with getting it and putting it to place and and with the the software vendor, so I know, uh, they had their hands full, your staff did, and, uh, you know, when we came in, we were asking all these, for all these reports and information, and they they were accommodating. So we do appreciate them taking the time out of the busy schedule and all here in the budget season, uh, to accommodate the auditors. Uh, a lot of things we'd like to do as part of the audit report is just make some general recommendations that we see, maybe possibly some areas the city could improve, or something we want the city council to be aware of. One of those items is a new accounting standard that's coming out, excuse me, so in twenty eighteen, uh, or excuse me, in twenty nineteen here on your next year's statements, uh, there's been a change to the, uh, the way fiduciary funds are being recorded. Uh, funds that, that'd be money that, uh, like maybe an outside organization gives the city to hold on to, uh, for them and act as a custodian, and in a fiduciary manner. Um, it, the change is gonna be largely cosmetic, um, but if you're looking through your two thousand eighteen statements and then next year, two thousand nineteen, you'll see a little more information on those fiduciary funds, how they're being used, where they're being used, uh, those types of items, some of the changes that occurred during the year in those funds. So that's, um, one of the changes you'll see next year. And then we have a few recommendations, uh, credit card policy, so we recommend that the city put a a policy in place regarding, uh, the proper use of the city's credit cards, uh, the appropriate use, the approval process, uh, to make sure that the city can verify all credit card purchases, uh, that are made. And then electronic funds, transfer policy. Uh, so if funds are transferred, uh, via EFT or or a wire transfer, uh, we recommend the city have a policy or draft a policy, put it in place, uh, outlining, you know, who who can make those transfers, how much, what are the limits on those types of transfers, and then who subsequently approves those transfers. So those are a few recommendations that we have, that we noticed going through some of our testing, uh, so something to consider. Um, and then, other than that, uh, here's my contact information, uh, so I think most of the staff here have my email and my phone number. So if you're going through this in your free time over the weekend, and you said, oh, you know, I wish I would ask Justin this or that, uh, you know, feel free to contact me, so. Uh, so at this point, open up any questions or comments anybody might have.
Council, any questions, comments?
I'm good.
I just want to thank you, Justin, and your staff for all the work that you did, um, I know that for them, this is typically the time that they're in school bar audits, and so for them to make the time to do that, and then also for Keith and Carla particularly, but also the rest of the staff, with the change and having to go through it with two different systems was quite the challenge, and uh, Keith, I I know, has really felt the pressure as well with doing the budget at the same time, so that's not something that we normally would like to do, but those two especially worked really hard to to get that done, so thank you guys, and thank you for all your work. Absolutely.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got some funds to transfer?
Yep.
Rural tax rates?
Well, we got, uh, twenty eighteen audit transfers and audit review, we got funds to transfer. Do we have those funds? Do we know which ones they are? We had a list of them someplace, I saw them.
Yeah, there's a list there.
I saw them someplace.
That's for PDF?
I think they're in the next one down maybe, or something.
A transfer of two hundred sixty thousand.
Yeah, where'd you find it?
No.
That's under the staff report.
It's this one.
Approved funds.
This is the, these are the.
There we go, yeah, yep. There they are. Yep, they're the next one down, local sales tax, local sales tax.
Yep.
All right, somebody want to move to approve that, uh, transfer, to approve the audit and the transfer of the funds?
Yes, I'll move to, um, approve the tran- fund transfers and accept the two thousand eighteen audit report as presented, um, noting the concern for credit card policy and electronic and wire transfer policy.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, all right, item B, rural ta- ta- tax rates. They're actually going down? Point zero two percent?
Yeah, if you recall, the, uh, rural tax rates are adjusted annually based on our prior year's urban tax rate increase or decrease, um, and so based on that, the the rates that are, um, being presented would show a point oh two percent decrease, um, and if you recall, we do have, um, three different tax rates, um, ex- excuse me, two, ninety-eight oh four and ninety-eight oh five at that point two oh, point oh two, excuse me, and then, um, also have ninety-eight oh seven, so there's three different, four different tax rates, I keep looking at that.
Ninety-eight oh eight?
Yep. And so they're all recommended for the, for the approval.
Or decreased equally, I believe, I think.
Yeah, and the purpose for that is, is that those those individuals that live more in that rural area, um, that don't have any services, um, or, you know, really are not really in that urban setting, as long as their property stays rural and they don't connect to water or sewer, they don't, um, plat their properties, um, that we allow them to stay at that real tax rate, just to to, just to kind of transition that burden in, so once it develops, and when services then that we provide are more, um, out there for them, uh, then they would be moved up to that urban tax rate.
I move to approve, um, the twenty twenty rule on tax rates for ninety-eight oh four, oh five, oh seven, and oh eight.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And approve fund transfers, transfer two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to move money from local sales tax to debt service fund for payment, uh, of a bond.
So if you recall, this is something that we're going to be required to do every year, um, with the the way that our sales tax dollars are structured, and when we use, um, them in a form of a bond, they have to be done in a tax abatement bond, and so this process that, um, we're establishing here is something that we have to do every year when we're adopting, or right at the same time that we're looking at our preliminary levy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item D, twenty twenty general fund preliminary budget, preliminary tax, and revised levy.
So as you know, um, every, uh, September, by September thirtieth every year, we need to set our general fund preliminary budget and, uh, preliminary property tax levy, um, those are included in here. Um, and then I also want to just note that the city council will, uh, hold a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty proposed budget and tax levy on Monday, December second, two thousand nineteen, at six forty-five PM, or soon thereafter at Wake Park City Hall. And so at this point, the setting of that general, uh, those levies and budgets are are really the high part mark for us, is, as you all know. Um, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, the first, um, motion would be to adopt the preliminary twenty twenty general fund budget.
Just, just a general.
General.
Point of of purpose is that these are the high marks, these are not, these are not necessarily cast in stone, that that, uh, December meeting is when anybody from the public and 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 we, every year, I say this, I think, and I I recommend, or I I ask people to come and tell us, you know, if, everybody says your taxes are too high, but I'd like to know where to cut it, so, uh, somebody might have a great idea out there, and we could save some money, so. But these are the high water marks, not the low water marks, so. All right, you need a motion?
I think we've determined kind of what the high level mark is this year.
Yeah.
All right, now.
Well, that is, this is the number.
This is it, right here.
Eight million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and then with the property tax levy? You want to move that one?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Which one?
Vic. I moved.
Yeah, Frank moved.
Mike and Vic second, so pick one of them.
We both moved at the same time, so.
Just pick one.
Further discussion?
That's what I've got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, passed unanimously, and then we need one adopting a revised preliminary twenty twenty property tax levy.
And so that also goes along with that tax abatement bond that you have to do.
The one we just did to get the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars transferred.
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
Is this the first resolution of the night? Okay, I always hope somebody was keeping track of that. If that wasn't.
Yeah, right.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I think we finally got. I think we finally got out of the taxes and the audit. All right, item E, rezoning, 51 11th Avenue South, formerly the old city shop. This public hearing was held a while back and just nothing, was not acted on it. The public hearing is still valid. All we have to, all we need.
Continue that, don't we?
No.
Nope.
We're going to approve it.
No, this is just a change from residential to commercial B two, I think it is.
Yep, that's, that's correct, Mayor Miller. Basically, this was, was my error. We did take it to the planning commission last, last August after the sale of the, the property from the city to Paul's Auto Service LLC. It just got lost in the mix of things. We had particularly busy August, September time. It actually came up again just recently. Paul's Auto kind of backed away from the property and they have moved out to the old Ford Auto location by Mills Fleet, or I should say Fleet Farm. So they're taking that over and as part of that, they clean that up, which is a little added benefit. But they're, they're offering it up for sale and as part of the due diligence, the interested party inquired about it and I, I had thought we took it to the, to the council, but for the life of me, I couldn't find that we did. And it appears I didn't, so we're rectifying that now. Hung Lee, who owns and operates Hung Lee Architects, has entered into a purchase agreement with the current owner and submitted preliminary plans for construction of a small office building, single story, up to two tenant spaces. This is actually what in planner terms we'd call a less intense use for the property, probably a better fit for a neighborhood than, than any form of auto repair, even as good a, a operation as Paul's runs. So we, we have sat down with Mr. Lee and have reviewed the prelim plans. We do feel it's a good fit for the area, but now requesting the, the formal approval of the rezoning from the R1 to the B2. If you recall, there is B2 across the street, so it does, it does fit. It's not considered a spot zone. And I think it would be a nice transition for the area there. We didn't receive any, any comments or concerns at the original public hearing from last August. We are, there's no time limit that, that those last, so we're still okay there. I did go through the, the address files to see if there's any changes in ownership. I didn't, I didn't see any. So I opted to, to just take it right back to the council here. So I'm recommending approval of that rezoning. I do feel it's a good use, so I, I think I'd be comfortable moving that to the B2 Commercial General Business District, which during the sale of that property, we kind of anticipated maybe likely.
All right, counsel, your wishes?
I'm going to move to approve the rezoning of 51 11th Avenue South.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Item F, consider award of Parkway Drive bus bake quote.
I think we should table it.
I'm going to move to reject all bids.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. The reason for that is because it, it, it's about a hundred thousand dollars more than it's worth to do it right now. So we were going to add it to another project and that other project's not going to go this year. So we're going to probably add it next year to a project to get a better cut, get a better rate for it, so. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item G, consider formally approving name of amphitheater.
Just to make it official, because your review of the names for the amphitheater was done in a work session and you do not take action. Your time to take action on formally adopting the name would be now. And based off of your discussion there and off of the information that we received from the surveys that we collected, the name that received the most votes was The Ledge with 297. Skyview had 162, the Gem had 48, Bedrock had 278, and Transformer had 53, for a total of 838. And we received almost 100 name suggestions, so it was a great process to go through.
I will make a motion that the formal name of the amphitheater is The Ledge.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Yeah, now after we did it. Item H, consider, consider facility needs assessment. John, I think that's probably you.
Well, I, I either, I can go ahead or any of us can. We, all three of us have kind of worked a little bit on this. But what you have in front of you is a facility needs assessment proposal from SEH that really will look at all of our city-owned facilities, including our city hall and all of the functions that happen here within city hall and also our public works. This is something that we have in the 2019 budget to do, to look at. If you recall, all of you'd have, but for those of you listening, we do have our former public works facility that we're utilizing right now for kind of miscellaneous and storage kinds of things. Give us an opportunity to look at down the road what we might want to do with that particular property in addition to how we want to look at our organizational needs. So the study is here before you. The fee to complete the study is estimated at 17,500 with an additional 500 to 1,000 for train, travel expenses that would come along with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Counsel?
Don't look at me.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the facility needs assessment as presented.
I'll second it.
Further discussion. Yeah, let's see. Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Yes.
Three to two passes. All right, counsel, mayor, approve bills and other business.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Metro Bus Appointment.
Is that you, Rick?
Yep, that's me.
I'll move, we appoint Rick to the Metro Bus Board.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, and I know that we, we don't, we normally take public input at 6:15 and I think maybe Sandy? You might have got misled on that one, so if you wanted to speak, go ahead.
Okay, I guess I was misled, but there's three of us here. And I'm Sandy Clogger.
Well, can you?
You have to talk in the microphone, I can't hear.
There you go.
Sandy Clogger, and my husband and I are from Avon, Minnesota. We have with us tonight Irene Haskamp, who's a neighbor. Is that better?
There you go.
Yep.
Do you need me to start over?
No.
No.
I have got a vacant lot on Third Street in Wake Park. So if you, for reference, North Third Street, McKinley School, and then to the east is my office building on 7th Avenue and a vacant, it's about 100 by 100 lot on Third Street. To the east of me is Irene's home and then another home past that. We're requesting tonight that you consider helping us remove the snow that is mounting on the sidewalk from the snow plows from Third Street. So Third Street now is two lanes of snow removal onto our property, properties. And there is a grass boulevard that is probably about five or six feet. The sidewalk there, I think it's about five or six feet. And the, when the snow plow comes by, it will take the two lanes of snow and put it onto the sidewalk. Now, the sidewalk probably has already had snow removal. And when the snow is melting, it is again shot onto the sidewalk and begins to ice up. So what I am requesting is you have got your maintenance machine, which is at the school anyway. And if it was the act of God, I understand, I have to remove my snow. But this is coming from Third Street. We requested in the past more than once that the snow plows would slow down. And we continue to have the problem of excessive snow coming from Third Street being blown up into our sidewalk.
All right, if, if you're referring to.
Brummer?
Yeah, yeah, if you're referring to the school, that, those aren't our, that's not our.
That's not our equivalent.
That school district does that.
Okay.
We don't do that. And to be honest with you, we don't remove snow off of sidewalks that have boulevards. And I lived on a corner that had that and I, I, I hear you 100%, but if we did that, we, we'd never get done plowing snow.
I feel your pain. I live on Third Street.
Yeah.
Down by the moose, so.
I, I feel it's a liability. It ices up and then when someone slips and falls, then I'm responsible.
Yeah, and like you say, that's just, that just happens to be one of those evils that you live on a, on us with a sidewalk and.
So can we request that the snow plows slow down?
Who plows that, county or us? We do, but if, the trouble is if you don't push it far enough to start with. What they should do is push it another five feet and get it off the sidewalk, which they can't do that either. I'm not saying, I'm not blaming Public Works for this. But, you know, you got to get it off the road and you, you can't just, you just can't slow down every so often either. Because if we do it, honestly, if we do it for you, I guarantee you next month we'll have five people standing there saying, well, you did it down there in a corner of 7th Avenue and Third Street. You got to do it down on 2nd Avenue and Third Street and you got to do it on 10th Avenue. And, and one of my council members is.
But not everyone has got two lanes of snow coming onto their property either.
Yeah, I have for the last 30 years.
Frank does.
I talk about it all the time.
Yeah, it's just, it, it.
It's a problem.
It's a problem, but it's.
In, in front of my house, the boulevard is less than three foot wide.
And then I, and then if I remove it and then I'm not there to remove it again, then.
Then I'll send you a letter.
Then you can find me. Then you can find me.
Yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty lenient about sending you a letter or asking to remove it before we find you, so.
Sandy, too, I understand what you're talking about. I live in a patio home development. And we have the same problem. Trucks come around, throw the snow up in the sidewalk. We have to rely on our snow removal company to remove it. If they remove it. I sympathize with you, but it, it's, we experience the very same thing and we're almost all old folks.
Irene, you want to say something?
Well, I might be older than you.
Well, if you want to, if you really want to get on the record, I mean, I need you to go to the microphone. Because otherwise it doesn't pick it up.
A lot of residents are 90 years, 97 years old.
It's, it's not a residential street anymore. It's like a highway. And, and, you know, I've counted cars in one minute, 22 cars. That's when they're going to work in one minute. And it's county road. It's not a residential street. And like, the, last year they did slow down some, but towards the end of the season, they were flying by. I can almost tell you every, what, how fast they're going. I've watched traffic there for 50 years. So I, I know that. And when they put the, that boulevard in again, I asked for them to put tar because that's what we had before.
Yeah, I remember that.
And that would have been a lot better. This way you go down Third Street, that grass someplace is weed someplace. You try to keep it nice and.
It's pointless.
It doesn't work because.
And that's, that's, I had boulevards when I lived on 7th, on 5th Avenue.
It's not a resident.
It's tough to keep boulevards green.
But then you do it on 2nd. They, they do the sidewalks there.
We do, we do sidewalk, we do sidewalks with city equipment and personnel if there's no boulevards.
Yeah, but.
So if there's concrete boulevard, or if you would have given her her.
Yeah, if you would have had the tar.
No, there's still a boulevard. The ones that were plowed are the ones.
Contrary to what we've been told and heard.
The ones that are plowed are the ones that are, that are butted right, right to it.
The sidewalk is.
When they went and slowed down to 15 miles, it made it a lot different.
So can they slow down?
What? You know that plow trucks can drive through red lights and stop signs? And they can go as fast as they need to, what is deemed to move the snow.
They're probably only going 15 miles an hour. They look like they're moving, but they're not going as fast as they look like, they sound like. They're moving snow, but what do you go, 15, 20 miles an hour?
Right. You, you got to go in fast enough to get that snow up and over, otherwise it's going to come right back in the road. And next thing you know, on a two-lane road, you got a one-lane road.
Which is where we.
Which is where, so you got to be able to get enough speed to get it up and over.
Yep.
And later in the season.
So the request is more snow because there's two lanes of highway or two lanes of clearing.
The whole stretch is two lanes.
And, and it's, and it's wider than typical, too.
Right.
What's that?
It's wider than typical because at the narrowest spot on my property, that road is 55 feet wide curb, curb. I've measured it.
So I don't understand what you're saying.
It's wider, so you even have more additional snow than, than a lot of other roadways.
The street is wider or the sidewalk is wider?
The street, curb to curb.
Is wider, so which means more snow is thrown into the, okay. Okay?
Yep, I've blown up snow blowers.
Yep, I've blown out my back.
Yeah, yeah. All right, and there was nobody at the open forum or the, the public comment period at 6:15. I do have a letter here from the League of Minnesota Cities and it's in reference to Senator Jerry Ralph. It's a letter that was sent, of course, to him and whatever, but it says, "On behalf of our 833 member cities, I want to thank you for your efforts this past legislative session and recognize you as the League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for 2019." This is Jerry Ralph, not me. So I just, I just want to do that. It's a longer letter. If anybody wants to read the whole letter, you sure can. But congratulations to Jerry and he's, he, he does look out for Wake Park, so good for him. John?
I just want to take a moment and the amphitheater open house last week was a great success. And one, I want to thank particularly the public works staff, guys, that helped make that happen. A lot of work behind the scenes that went into that. My admin staff for helping with the, the event itself and the council for putting, doing all the tours. And it was a beautiful day, a little warm, but it was great. We had a lot of good positive responses from that and it was great to see the turnout.
Yep, it turned out very well, so.
Man, you guys did a great job, too. The staff did a great job.
Thank you.
Yep. Counsel, you got anything else?
Nope.
John? Bill? John?
Sir.
I don't know what, how we got here.
Keith?
White, sir.
Paul? All right, we are adjourned at 7:17.